All right. Good evening, Temecula. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of August 9th to order. First of all, I wanted to start by thanking our amazing piano player in the background there. I'm sorry, I don't have your name. What's your name? Shout it out. Aubrey? All right, Aubrey, thank you so much for playing for us this evening. It's always a wonderful way to start the meeting. Okay, this evening, our invocation is Pastor Dan Cole of Hope Lutheran Church. And our flag salute will be followed up by our esteemed Luke Watson.
Oh. Let us pray. Oh, God, we thank you that we share such common belief, even though so diverse. We share the words of kindness and love and actions and words. We thank you for these leaders in our community who have heard your call to serve one another, to love one another, to go out of their way to help one another. Be with them tonight as they share your love and your kindness with each other, with the community, with all that they do. Be with them, God, and guide them. Thank you. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
I'm here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
I'm here.
Mayor Protam Schwank.
Oh, I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Okay. We have no presentations tonight, but we do have two board and commission reports. Let's get started with Kathy Seismar, Community Services. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ron and City Councilmembers and city staff. I'm Kathy Seismar and Chair of the Community Services Commission. And the mission of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and rec element of the general plan. We have five commissioners on our commission, and we had our last meeting last night, August the 8th, 2022. We had the wonderful privilege of having a presentation last night during our meeting. We had a full house. That was very enjoyable. We had a presentation of certificates and recognition for the Junior Lifeguard and Swim Buddy Volunteer Program this summer. On our business calendar, we approved our action minutes from our last meeting on June 13th, 2022. And our commission will have our next meeting on September the 10th. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. JR Richardson, how's traffic safety?
Traffic safety is awesome. So I'm JR Richardson. I'm chairman of the Public Traffic Safety Commission. And let me see if I can get my videos. Okay, our commission, the duty of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design and engineering, everything traffic-related. We are five commissioners, Eric Ackerman, Robert Carter, David Maddox, myself, and Bradley Sullivan. And our last meeting was July 28th, 2022. We had two business items on our agenda. The first was to review the highway safety improvement plan, the HCP Cycle 11 Grant. And this was just a receive and file. And on the next slide goes into a little more detail on the five items that the staff proposed. So in Cycle 11 this time, next slide, yep. And so the first was to upgrade pedestrian signals, 55 signaling intersections with countdown pedestrian heads, and additional upgrades including traffic signal controllers. Number two, improved signal hardware, 127 traffic signals with LED safety lighting, and some will get upgrades related to signal hardware wiring, controller cabinets. The third, everyone's favorite, improved signal timing, right? It's still coming, and every, number one thing we're asked for is better signal timing. So this is to upgrade fiber communications and signal timing on multiple corridors, including Butterfield Stage and Inez. We've pretty much done the east-west. We're now working on the north-south corridors in the city. Number four, bike safety improvements is to upgrade various intersections with bike detection loops to detect a bicycle when there's not a car there, and add the Green Bike Legends, which you've seen, and pedestrian crossing ahead enhancements to upgrade various pedestrian ramps near schools for ADA compliance. Our second agenda item was to look at the Engineering and Traffic Survey update. And the key word on this slide is that we wanted to reaffirm the speed limits identified in the summary of recommended speed limits. So normally, it's a seven-year cycle to approve, but you can now reaffirm and extend that to 14 years if there's been no significant or major changes to the road segment or surrounding environment that might warrant a reassessment. So on the next several slides, we see those roadways. And so you'll notice that every roadway on these next three slides, the existing speed limit and the proposed speed limit are the same, again, just reaffirming because there were no changes. All in all, it was a total of, I believe, 74 roadway segments where we just reaffirm the speed limit. So this is just, you know, following the process to verify that these could be extended from seven to 14 years. And that concludes our report, and our next meeting will be August 25th.
All right. Wonderful. Thanks so much. All right. Public Safety Report. Chief Crater, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Temecula Fire Department for the month of July 2022 ran 852 calls in the city. The map indicates the blue are medical, the reds are fire calls that we responded to. Out of the calls, 649 were medical-related calls, and 19 of those were fires in the city limits. Also, we responded to 52 traffic collisions. As you can see, where the freeway runs through there, all those blue dots, and that's our traffic collisions on the freeway. And what that means to us as a fire department, with traffic safety goes along with many of the things we talk about in these meetings, so we're happy to be engaged and be able to have those conversations. Next slide, please. As far as our fire prevention folks, they've been busy in the city. Things are not slowing down. For plan reviews, 486. Construction inspections, 239. Our annual inspections, which are state mandated here in the city, 520. We're on track to complete those early, which is great. And then people coming into City Hall to inquire about permits and inspections, 36. And then you can see the yearly totals there on the right. I've been missing a couple of weeks. I went to training, and one thing that kind of set me back because I didn't know what the curriculum was, was how do our new battalion chiefs and even division chiefs interact with cities? And why is it important? And what that means? And the slides were Temecula's general plan, Temecula's specific plan, Temecula's Quality of Life Master Plan, and how the fire department fits into all that for the quality of life in our city. So that was a proud moment for me, being the Temecula Fire Chief, and be able to add a little bit to the class with firsthand knowledge. And I think they really took a lot away from that, going, I'm not just a battalion chief, I'm an ambassador for my city, and I have, you know, a seat at the table, and there's change that can be made for, you know, our citizens with, you know, having that dialogue. So that was great. Thank you for your time.
Wow, remarkable. Thank you so much for sharing that. All right. Public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a few public comments on non-agendized items. Each speaker will have five minutes pursuant to, I'm sorry, each speaker will have three minutes pursuant to the rules provided on the agenda. And the first speaker is Maria Beldovanos, followed by Craig Evans. Maria, if you want to go ahead and come on up to the podium?
Evening.
Good evening. How are you all doing tonight? So, good evening, the city of Temecula. Thank you for having us speaking here this evening. We're really appreciative of your time and all of the hard work that you guys put into the city in making it better and safer for everybody, so we just really appreciate all of you. I just wanted to share what the Temecula City Support meant for the Rose Again Foundation. They have helped meet the needs of many foster children that otherwise would go unmet in our community. These children, they're often removed from everything that they know, and they arrive only with the clothes on their bag, lack of education, of lack of resources and things like that. So Rose Again Foundation exists to help meet the needs of these children. And I just wanted to tell all of you, because of your support, we were able to meet the needs of three siblings that we recently got that came with really severe needs. So these boys, under the age of 13, they have been through such unimaginable trauma. The foster dad had contacted us, and I'm sure that the youngest, who was 10, he was caught Googling on his school iPad by his teacher on how to commit suicide. And that really alarmed all of us. So together with the parent and Rose Again, we were able to team up and just see how we could help meet the needs of these siblings and what is going on. So with the help of lots of therapy, we were able to provide special need items, such as a weighted blanket to help reduce the anxiety at night because bedtime was the hardest for them, as that's when their abuser would abuse them in the past. So we were able to provide them a weighted blanket to help ease the anxiety at night, and also a white noise machine to drown out the noise because that's when the siblings would think they would hear the abuser at night. And so it helped a lot at bedtime. And of course, the therapist recommended, through our extracurricular activity program, that we put them in reins therapy. And what that is, is it's a special horse therapy that helps them to trust again and learn how to care for horses, and that already has made such a big difference in their lives. So we just wanted to thank the city of Temecula for having such a huge impact in just these siblings, and these are just one of the many stories that you guys have all made an impact in, and we're just extremely grateful for your support. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. The next speaker is Craig Evans, to be followed by our last speaker, Bob Cal.
Evening.
Good evening. I have not used this before, so, there we go. Good evening, councilpersons and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Craig Evans. I'm a longtime resident of Temecula since 1989. My family and I have been here. But tonight, I'm representing over 550 residents that live near or adjacent to the French Valley Airport. Of those, nearly 200 are Temecula Valley, Temecula City residents, from Aurora Paw Ranch to Nicholas Valley Corridor to the Meadow View, Somers Bend, all in that area. The group that I represent is known as tvnoise.org, Temecula Valley Neighbors Organized to Influence Sky Environment. Although aircraft noise was our main purpose, tonight, I'm here to alert you of some other issues, a very important one that is coming out of the French Valley Airport, and that is lead. Leaded gasoline is being used by 95% of the aircraft that fly in and out of the French Valley Airport. And as most of you know, leaded gasoline was banned. Well, leaded gasoline was banned from all automobiles in 1994, yet it is still being used in aircraft. We know from hundreds of studies that lead is a poison. It lowers the IQ in children, it contributes to ADHD, cardiovascular diseases, and a myriad of other health issues. Just last month, the U.S. Congress House Committee on Oversight and Reform had a hearing entitled Toxic Air: How Leaded Aviation Fuel Is Poisoning Our Children. You can view it on YouTube if you're interested. The EPA says that our airport, the French Valley Airport, is the largest contributor of lead in Riverside County. Over 500 pounds of lead per year comes from that airport, and it is out of the tailpipes of those aircraft. That lead, that lead is being, as we would say, crop dusted over our community. And this photo I have for you is a typical flight of one aircraft doing touch-and-goes around that airport. If you can kind of get the orientation, north, of course, is up, and Marietta Hot Springs, Summer Bend is over here, not developed in this photo. You'll see the arrows. Those are three schools, Nicholas Valley Elementary over here, Bella Vista Middle School, and Alamos Elementary School, being flown over every day by hundreds of aircraft that are crop dusting us with lead. What can we do about it? I know it's not a county, it's not a city airport, but it is your sphere of influence. You do have the ability to influence and let the county know. There's two pretty good solutions among many others. One, the county can help divert those aircraft, not to fly over our schools and parks. There's other places to fly besides over those schools. And the second one, like Santa Clara.
Time is up, so if you could just summarize, I apologize.
Santa Clara County, up in, near San Jose, have banned leaded fuel from their airports. We can do that here, too. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
And the last speaker on non-agendized items is Bob Cal.
Good evening.
Hello there. I looked at the Quality of Life Master Plan meeting the other day, and I saw a lot of, it looks like if you sell a piece of property, you have to put so much affordable housing on it. Having said that, I'm telling you, you don't want any more housing anywhere. You guys should stand up against more housing. All of you should just say, hey, no more, because I know it's the law, but I tell you what, take a look at Las Vegas right now with Lake Mead drying up. You think they're building more houses? If the state told them to build more houses in Las Vegas, do you think they're going to? With people dying, with having them move out because there's no more, there's no more water? I look at Alhambra where I grew up, there's no more water for Alhambra. All the lawns are dead now because they can't use the water for their landscaping. If you go ahead and do all these things that you plan on this thing, the plan is basically, it hurts the people that you're supposed to protect. You should protect all the people that are living here now and not those that would move in later and take advantage of a system that is made to destroy this neighborhood. I will not be living here when it comes like that. I will be moving to somewhere else, and I know you'll all be happy for that. But, and you can laugh at that if you want, but I don't think a lot of people want to live here. I moved from Alhambra for all those reasons. I'm just telling you. Where are you going to get the power? Where are you going to get all the power from? With all the people that need power? Where are you going to get all the transportation? Where, you know, even if you had on the freeway, at there on 215 and the 15? How are you going to get all the traffic in and out of this area right now? It's jam-packed. People don't even come down here because of that reason, in many cases. You have to go back roads, and once you fill up those back roads with affordable housing, you can't even move in either. So I'm telling you, please stand up against the state, find other cities that stand up with you. Do not vote for any more of these affordable housing things. They are going to hurt us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, city council reports. Who'd like to go first, Stu?
All right. So I don't know if anybody knows, but we did a blood drive here at City Hall today, and I took part in it. And they do what's called Power Red. And I didn't know a whole lot about this, but if you're O, any O, O negative or O positive, you can do what's called Power Reds. And I put a video up, I actually videotaped myself doing this. So Temecula Stu, if you're ever interested in seeing the video, it's where they, somehow they spin the blood in such a way that they can pull all the red blood cells out, and then the plasma is separated out, and then the plasma is injected back into you. And it's a very interesting process, but that, those Power Red cells are actually what's used for trauma victims. So when they need that really potent blood for someone who's had extreme blood loss. So I highly recommend, there's, you can see on the screen, there's four dates in the future that, you can do that right here at City Hall. So you have to go to the temeculaca.gov blood drive to register, but I highly recommend it. You could save a life, so please consider giving blood.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Jessica.
First. I don't know which slide they're going to put up first, so, okay, we'll start out with National Night Out. So this was our first, first time ever doing National Night Out here in Temecula, and I was able to go with, those are my two kids. I believe Mary Ann showed up. Let me see who else. I think everybody showed up, right? I think it was, it was very, it was very successful, and I have to just tell you, having young children, it was such an opportunity for our kids to just be able to connect with our first responders in order to see that they are just like them, and to just create the community, to know that they can, you know, go to these individuals if they need help. So I really, I loved this National Night Out. I actually spoke to some staff today about some possible new ideas that might be a little bit more fun even to add to what we already have, so I'm really excited to see if we can go through with that. So next year, I hope to, even more people will be able to come out because it was a wonderful event. Our next thing that I want to just talk about is our Military Banner Program. I'm sure most of the people who have been around City Hall have seen the, you know, we proudly honor and whoever the service member is. So I just wanted to highlight these because we do currently, right now, have over 30 spaces left and available. They are for active-duty members. They are for only Temecula residents, and if, meaning that either if the active-duty or their family member, they must live within the Temecula City limits. Also, the best part is it is free, and also, we have, we just want to make sure that obviously they have proof of residence and a military ID to show that they are still currently an active-duty member. And they are displayed currently right now throughout the Civic Center, and we are trying to get more out onto Main Street. So if you guys know of anybody who's an active-duty member, I would just urge you to just come in, fill out the application, pretty simple, bring the ID, and, you know, just get them honored in our city for everybody to see them. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my favorite event of the year is coming up, and that would be Build Your Own Boat Regatta at the CRC, and Stu's always there, too, and Zach's always there because he's been coming with his kids for a number of years. So every participant family gets a couple of pieces of giant cardboard, and I don't know how many rolls of duct tape, a couple of rolls of duct tape, right? And you have an hour to build a boat, any kind of boat you want, out of those materials, and then you float that boat in the pool, and we have the best races ever. I think we give, give some, you know, they can have paddles, and then we have, what do you call those monsters that we put in the middle of the pool? The kraken, yes. So they have to avoid the kraken. But what's so much fun is that a lot of the boats don't, they make it off the side of the pool and then go straight to the bottom, and, and some of them do quite well. So I will be there again this year, and I think Zach's going to be there with the kids, right? Jessica, you should definitely come bring the kids. Matt, we'll get you a boat. How'd that be?
Do we have enough cardboard?
Yeah, I think we have enough cardboard. And Stu actually ended up in the pool one year. So, yeah, yeah. So it's a lot of fun. So that's August the 26th at the CRC, and registration is full right now, but I don't know if you can come and, you know, push your nose through the fence and watch because it is a very entertaining evening of pure family fun in Temecula. So I'll see you on the 26th.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on, we have a consent calendar this evening. Item number one, approve action minutes of July 26 and August 2, 2022. Wave readings, number two, standard ordinance resolution, number three, approval list of demands, number four, approve city treasurer report as of December 30, 2021, January 31, 2022, and February 28, 2022, and March 31, 2022. Number five, receive report regarding status of upcoming vacancies on commissions. Number six, adopt resolutions supporting Proposition 26 and opposing Proposition 27 at the request of myself and Councilmember Edwards. Item number seven, approve license agreement between city of Temecula and Friends of Temecula Libraries for use of city real property. Item number eight, award construction contract to DBS, Inc. for traffic signal installation citywide, Rancho Cal Road and T-Drive, PW 1919. Number nine, approve First Amendment to Agreement with Mark Thomas &amp; Company, Inc. for the Cherry Street Extension and Marietta Creek Low Flow Crossing Project, PW 1915. Item number 10, approve Track Map 38018 located on Somers Bend between Sports Ranch at Somers Bend to the west, Somers Place, a private recreational center to the east, and Long Valley Wash to the south. Item number 11, approve Parcel Map 38189 located on the southwest corner of Wolf Store Road and Butterfield Stage Road. Item number 12, approve Second Amendment to Right-of-Way Entry Agreement, I'm sorry, Right-of-Entry Agreement with Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority on city-owned properties within Temecula Creek. Item 13, approve Second Amendment to the Minor Maintenance Agreement for Homeless Encampment Cleanup Services with Sing Group, Inc. And I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I would like to pull item number five just for a brief staff report.
And if I can pull item number six as well, for the same thing.
So would you like to move the balance?
Can we, please?
Sure, then move the balance.
I'll second that.
All right. Please cast your votes. All right. Let's start with item number five, receive report regarding status of upcoming vacancies on commissions. Stu?
So could you please give a little bit of an explanation on what the vacancies are? And then also talk about our city council election that's right around the corner, and the filing period is almost up, so.
Happy to do that, Councilmember Stewart. So we'll start with the commission vacancies first. So on December 31, 2022, there will be vacancies on the Community Services Commission, two positions, Planning Commission, two positions, Public Traffic Safety Commission, two positions, and our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission, three positions. The vacancies are advertised pursuant to our previous practice through the newspaper, website, social media, et cetera. The city council will make appointments to those positions at a public meeting in November 2022. The term of each appointment will be January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2025. The recruitment period for those positions, as you indicated, Councilmember Stewart, is open now. It runs from August 1, 2022, through September 30, 2022, and applicants may apply online through the city's website at temeculaca.gov. So Board and Commission vacancies, actually, this go around, it's just commission vacancies. We have nine vacancies. All members of the public that are interested are encouraged to visit our Board and Commission website, and on there, they can find out a little bit about what every commission does, as well as the link to go ahead and apply for the vacancy that they're interested in. They have until September 30 to do so. Then we, with respect to our upcoming election, the next general municipal election for the city of Temecula will be held on November 8, 2022, for three council seats, District 1, District 3, and District 5. Districts 2 and 4 will be voted upon in 2024. The nomination period for November 8, 2022, general municipal election is open right now. Nomination papers may only be issued and filed during the nomination period, which runs from July 18 through August 12. If an incumbent does not run, the nomination period will be extended to August 17 for the corresponding district only. So and again, the district, the nomination period for District 3 and 5, as both incumbents have filed, is expected to close on August 12, which is this Friday. District number 1 is expected to be extended to August 17. Candidates must be registered voters of their respective districts, and additional information about our election, districting, how to register to vote, campaign contributions, all of that good stuff can be found on our city page under the elections, city clerk's webpage under the elections tab at temeculaca.gov.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
You are most welcome, Councilmember Stewart. And if we could get a motion to approve that item.
Move approval.
Didn't we already do that?
No.
We moved the balance, but these are remaining.
good stuff can be found on our city page under the elections, City Clerk's webpage under the elections tab at temeculacaa.gov.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
You are most welcome, Councilmember Stewart. And if we could get a motion to approve that item.
Move approval.
Didn't we already do that?
Uh-uh. We moved the balance, but these are remaining.
I've got it.
Second.
And is that for both 5 and 6?
No.
Okay, just 5, okay.
Councilmember Alexander, did you mean item 6?
Yes.
Did you register the way you wanted to for item 6?
No, we're going to do the same thing.
Gotcha.
So, I just wanted to see if I can get a staff report on that one.
Okay, yeah, can we have a staff report on item 6, please?
So with respect to item number 6, this item actually came before our local control subcommittee of Mayor Ron and Councilmember Edwards, and we actually have Jacob Mejia in the audience, so that since this item has been pulled, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Mejia to go ahead and come on up to the podium. Since you are here, it did not stay on consent, so. The League of California Cities, as indicated in the report, took an opposed position against 27 and took a neutral position on 26 because some cities had differing viewpoints, so in that, in that respect, with respect to cardroom cities. So in that respect, the League stayed neutral on that particular one. It was requested that the City of Temecula go ahead and take a, an opposed position on 27, which is consistent with what the League of California Cities and other cities have done throughout the state, and for our purposes, given our relationship with our tribal community, a support position for Proposition 26. Mr. Mejia, please feel free to add what you wish.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Councils. Good to be here. That's an excellent summary by a very capable city clerk. Just in sum, we are asking for support, support for Proposition 26. It's pretty straightforward. Simply allows the addition of new games at tribal casinos, including craps and roulette, and in-person sports wagering. Also allows in-person sports wagering at four licensed racetracks throughout the state of California. It's pretty straightforward. In that sense, it includes enforcement provisions as well to help prevent and stop illegal gambling. The whole underlying premise of legalizing sports wagering is to stop the illegal activities. That's Prop 26. Pachanga, I should mention, is a sponsor of Prop 26. Conversely, Proposition 27, you've probably seen the TV ads, let me apologize for that. There's going to be a lot more between now and election day. Prop 27, on the other hand, is funded 100% and written by out-of-state seven out-of-state online gaming corporations. They are attempting to basically unleash the biggest expansion of online and mobile gaming in U.S. history. That's why over 55 tribes and growing are opposed to Prop 27. On the yes side, there are only three out of 110 tribes that are in support. It's bad policy. It's bad for California, it's bad for our economy, it's bad for tribes, it's bad for our kids. And so we would ask for your consideration for a yes on 26 and no on 27. Thank you.
Thank you.
I so appreciate your, your coming up here and talking. So just a quick thing with me. I so appreciate the relationship and support that we have from our, you know, our tribal community. They're a huge importance in our community. I just want to be able to take the position, just as a council member, that because it's going to be on a statewide ballot measure, I just don't feel that is my duty to speak out for the people, and they're going to be able to speak out either yes or no for it. So as of right now, just for the City Council, I just can't support that, but I want to support you guys in whatever you believe in, but I just want to make sure that, as it's going to go forth in November, that the people get to pick that and not here at the city. So that's it. But thank you so much. But no, trust me, I have my positions, I understand, but just as a council, that's just kind of where I'm standing. So thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion in a second.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we are going to adjourn to Temecula Community Services District.
All right, I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all still here. Do we have any public comment? All right. So we're on to the consent calendar, which is item number 14, approve the action minutes of July 26, 2022. Anybody?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded, please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Director Report.
Okay, so the Temecula Valley Museum will be featuring a new exhibit called Ancestry and Animals, beginning on August 12. This exhibit will feature the fine art of local artist Hajime Ono and will be on display through December 4. Ono finds inspiration in his Japanese heritage and in the beauty and resilience of the animals that pique his curiosity. Also at the museum in Sam, Sam Hicks Monument Park, we'll have our Second Saturday on Saturday, August 13. This time, we will be celebrating Belgium as part of our Second Saturday Cultural Celebration Series. Families are invited to experience Belgian cuisine, participate in a red poppy craft, and enjoy a live saxophone performance. This free event is open to everyone, and it is from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And on the next slide, we just wanted to highlight our summer food service program, which just came to a close this past week. This year, we served 2,500 nutritious meals, which I believe was the, the most we've served in any of the years we've been offering this program. This program is a really important way of combating food insecurity in our communities. And it's free, it's funded through the federal government, and it's administered through the state of California. And it's essentially an expansion of the school lunch program. So just as the school lunch program provides meals to children who need it in the school setting during the summer, the state allows us to expand that program into park sites. So we've been having this program for many years now over at Nigar Park, and for next summer, we're looking at possibly trying to expand to a second park site because it's had such an overwhelming response. So we're very grateful to all of the, all of you council members and our commissioners who showed up and helped us with this program, as well as to the hard-working staff you see out there who go out regardless of the heat and serve meals to everyone who comes out. So we're very happy with that program and excited to see it grow every year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. General Manager's Report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right. So Director's Report, I'm going to start and hopefully probably be the only one. Could I get the slide? Okay, so the commerce, the summer concert series is over, but it was fantastic. It was by far, I think, the most attended, and I don't know if that was a COVID thing or what, but like the last four concerts, we had four to 600 people there every single Thursday night. It was very, very well-received, and we've got some big plans for next year, and I can't really reveal it yet, but it's going to be-
Oh, come on.
Yeah, it's going to be stellar. As soon as I can, I will post you guys on it, so.
We can just say we'll be ending the series with a special, a special concert.
A very special event, yes, for sure. So any other? Nope, okay.
You're not on the dance floor if you're taking the picture.
Oh, I got tons of that, yeah. So I will adjourn this back to the City Council meeting.
All right. Okay, so moving on, we have a call to order for the Temecula Public Financing Authority, and all members are still present. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. We only have one item on the consent calendar this evening. Item 15, approve action minutes of July 26, 2022.
Move to par, par, action minutes.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Do we have an Executive Director Report this evening?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Any Board of Directors? All right, we're going to go ahead and close that meeting and move on to reconvene Temecula City Council meeting and public hearing. Item number 16 is to conduct Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TFRA, hearing, and adopt resolution approving issuance of not to exceed $36 million of California Enterprise Development Authority revenue obligations for the benefit of Rancho Community Reform Church. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you mentioned, we're here to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, otherwise known as a TFRA, hearing. And the specific action before the council tonight is to consider a resolution approving the issuance by the California Enterprise Development Authority, otherwise known as CEDA, of revenue obligations for the benefit of Rancho Community Church. And I'll say this upfront, and I'll remind everybody again at the end of the presentation, the city is not issuing debt, and the city is not responsible for any of the obligations for much I'm about to describe. So I just wanted to put that out there right from the get-go. The purpose of the hearing, of the TFRA hearing, is it's a public hearing required by the IRS Code to be held before the applicable elective representative body, which is the City Council in this case, prior to the bond obligations or any other debt obligations being issued. The TFRA hearing purpose is to allow interested persons an opportunity to express their views for or against the issuance of the bonds. Rancho Community Church has requested the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds through CEDA, bonds not to exceed $36 million. The proceeds of the bonds are for financing and refinancing the costs of acquisition, development, construction, equipment, and furnishings at their facilities. Just a little background, the California Enterprise Development Authority was formed in 2006 to assist for-profit and nonprofit corporations and other entities with obtaining financing for projects that serve the public interest. Currently, there are over 200 member jurisdictions of CEDA, and the city has been a member of CEDA since 2019. So what's the city's role? It's very simple. The city's role is to provide a public venue to hold the public hearing, which we're doing right now. And then it's to consider and potentially approve a resolution allowing CEDA and Rancho Community Church, not the city, to issue bonds. So again, I'll reiterate, the city is not issuing any debt of its own here tonight. As an associate member of CEDA, the city is not responsible for any financial or other obligations of CEDA, and the city does not have any responsibility concerning the repayment of any revenue obligations or any other debt issued by CEDA or Rancho Community Church. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution approving the issuance by CEDA of revenue obligation bonds for the benefit of Rancho Community Church. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have Mr. Scott Treadway here from Rancho Community Church, if you have any questions for him.
All right, questions? Stu?
Do have a question. Scott, what's the money going to be used for? Partay or what?
Well, that is a great question. Rancho is many things, as most of you know. We are a church. We founded and operated Community Mission of Hope, which operates our community farm just right down the road, the community food pantry, housing counseling, and housing in the city of Marietta. We also operate Rancho Domocetus, which is a home for, actually a village, for single moms and babies. We also are a school, one of the largest private schools in the inland empire, if not the largest. And so the entire debt obligation here is for the school. So constitutionally, these bonds are allowed to be issued for the non-sectarian education of students. It's a very complicated process because you have to remove all of these sectarian functions, and what's remaining, and you have to prove this, and it's reviewed annually, is the entire debt obligation has to be for non-sectarian educational use only. So it's a very involved process, but constitutionally validated over the course of, I think, two decades. So that's about as short as I can make that presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any others? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, council and staff, for the great work you do for our city.
Appreciate it. All right. Well, if that's the case, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Can we open the public hearing?
Ah, we have to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
We do not have any additional public comment.
Then I'm going to close that.
Excellent.
All right. We have a motion in a second.
Can we please repeat the motion?
I'll move the item. Oh, sorry.
Oh, the motion? And I'm second?
Stu.
Yeah.
Peter, do you have to read this one?
No.
No? Okay. All right, thank you. That passes 5-2-0. Look forward to seeing this. All right, let's see. Next, items for future City Council agendas. Anybody have anything they are interested in? Nothing. Well, I have some, no, I'm kidding. City Managers' Report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had a closed session tonight, but we have no items to report under the Brown Act from that closed session.
All right. This meeting was only 45 minutes long.
Very good.
What do we, anybody have, have anything else they want to talk about?
Move adjournment.
It's not on the agenda.[1791.61]